All right, it is 6 o'clock on Monday, July 17th, so we'll begin the selectmen's meeting. We have Steve Pello from Silver Lake Regional School District. He is the technology director here to talk to us about technological upgrades possible for the townhouse. So Steve, do you want to come to the podium and I'll turn it over to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
So about a month ago or so, John approached me looking for information on what we're doing for AV work at Denit. And he came over and saw some of the projection systems we put in there and liked it. So he brought over Matt?
Mark.
Mark. Sorry, horrible names. He wrote over Mark and they had a look at it. And based on feedback, Oakers sent over three quotes for three various systems that would fit, based on the description I gave him of the townhouse in the room. What you have before you are the three quotes from Oakers. One is for a projection system, and I believe that is the top one with the ultra-sharp throw projector. And then the other two would be for LCD television screens that would be mounted there and not use a projection system. Given the scope of this room, the first decision you really need to make is whether you want it to be an interactive projector or non-interactive projector. And the difference is on an interactive projector, with the projection system, you have pens, like dry erase pens, it projects onto a dry erase board. And you can go up and draw on it, you can save your notes, you can annotate. So if someone had put up a slide, say, of the proposed police station, they could go up and highlight different things going up. And then you could either save it for posting to the website or just erase it, just as you would a dry erase marker. And that can be had in either projection, which is the top quote, or the middle option, option two. That would be a clear touch, interactive LCD TV that would be basically like an LCD TV you have in your home, 70-inch, mounted on the wall. And that would also be interactive. Functionally, you're going to have the same outcome. You're going to have a good clear picture, it's going to be bright, it's going to be sharp. You're going to be able to use it interactively. So although it's a different technology, functionally, you get the same results.
We can draw on the TV?
Yes, it has the ability to use like pens, just like the projection one does. You couldn't use a dry erase marker, but you could use the electronic pens that come with it. And I believe, if I recall the clear touch, you can also use your finger. Given the location over there, if you're going to use interactive, I would recommend you not mount it from the chair rail up, that you mounted a little lower, because anyone vertically challenged, such as myself, could not reach the top of a four-foot board from there. The one disadvantage with this room to mounting it lower is the lower you go, the more interference you get from people sitting in the audience. If you have a packed house and someone's sitting over here, and the bottom of the board is a foot down from the chair rail, no, they're not going to see it. So that would be a decision you obviously, as a board, need to make on how you want to use it.
I have a question around the TV. It seems, what happens, the technology moves so fast, that if it's a whiteboard, you know, it's going to be there.
Yes.
But these TVs, if we went that route, what happens, you know, two years from now, if all of a sudden you have to upgrade or?
Well, realistically speaking, an LCD TV will probably get you four to five years, about the same life as you'd expect from a projector. The technology used with a computer, used with a document camera, used with an Apple TV device, isn't going to change in the next five years to make it incompatible with what you have up there. Yes, there's always the latest and greatest technology coming down the road, there's always something today that's better than yesterday's and might not work with you, but for the basics of what you're looking to do, I don't see that being an issue for the next four to five years. And realistically, in four to five years, the technology's getting to the point where its projectors wear out, they do with time. With the amount of use you're getting here, probably not in four to five years, but it does happen.
But with the school, you've gone with the whiteboards, right?
Yes, we've gone with the whiteboards at the school, because if you've ever been in a classroom at Denit, the front of the room is gold teaching space, that is the prime teaching spot. If we put an 80-inch TV up there, unless the teacher's doing an interactive lesson with the TV, that's dead space, that's unusable. A whiteboard, you can use it as a whiteboard. If you don't want to project, you can use it as a whiteboard. Whereas the projection, the LCD TV, its only function is going to be when you're using it with a computer or a display. That and financially, it made more sense to go with the projectors, because it was, at the time, a much lower cost. As you can see, the prices for the TVs are coming down to the range where they're close to what you're getting for the projection. Now, as a side note, the top one, which is the Epson projector, that is a non-interactive version of the projector. Because when I was explaining to, I said, the thought had been to mount it high, which would render the interactivity a little less than functional. An interactive upgrade for that projector would be roughly $600 more, ballparking it.
And then just, so interactive versus non-interactive, what are we talking about?
Basically, the interactive will allow you to go up and draw on the screen, annotate, make notes. It will also allow you to, if you say you marked up the police station with some drawings and said, you know, we can move the driveway here or here, you could then save that as a PDF file and put it on the website for people who were not necessarily here. Is that overly useful, or is your broadcasting it on cable? I'll leave that up to you decide.
So if we had a PowerPoint presentation that someone was coming in and doing, we could do the presentation on the whiteboard, we would just have to figure out how cable was going to videotape it, it may not tape that well?
Actually, these projections do work very well. We use them at Silver Lake, at Kingston, at Halifax, for the school committee meetings, and they've usually done pretty well. We did try it with the projection at Denit, with the lights out in the library, with an iPad, and it was very clear.
Yeah, we did see that.
Okay.
And what a surprisingly clear.
Well, I would think it'd be possible to, if they don't offer something to move the whiteboard, that maybe we could have something made, so it wasn't permanently mounted over there. I mean, there may be, I don't know if cable, if that would be the best spot for them to record this with cable, or whether we'd need to have the whiteboard somewhere else for taping purposes.
What do you think about that, mounting, having it on wheels, so that we can use it in more than one room?
You can certainly go with a mobile cart option. That is something we did at the kindergarten in Halifax, because two of their rooms, the walls come down, so we couldn't mount it to the walls. An interactive setup on that, you'd add about $1,200 for the mobile cart with whiteboard. Again, rough ballparking it.
Okay.
But that way, you could wheel it wherever. And it is also height adjustable electronically, so you can move it up if you're not interactive, you can bring it down if you are.
All right, so that gets us, this was like $342, $48, so about $5,000 if we wanted it to be mobile.
That would be a good rough number, yes.
Okay, all right.
And that would give you the advantage of being able to wheel it to another room.
Now, we still need the dock.
Whatever setup you go with, you're going to probably want to have a computer and a document camera. The document camera basically allows you to just take a piece of paper, put it on and project it onto whatever device you're using. The computer, you'd probably want a decent laptop or desktop that would be dedicated to that. It would have PowerPoint, it would have Office, it would have the ability, someone could bring a thumb drive with a presentation. Or if they brought their own laptop, you could unplug it and plug it into their laptop.
Okay.
The dock cam is running right around $190 at the moment.
$200.
The computer would be whatever you decide to use.
Okay, and that would just be a laptop?
Yeah. And you could do a laptop, you could do a desktop, whichever you felt would be more appropriate for the room. Laptops can't have a tendency to walk away. Desktops are less likely to.
True.
Although you could do a Kensington lock with the.
Laptop would make sense, because then we can put it in the administrator's office.
Right. So if somebody came in with an iPad or their own laptop from another committee, and they wanted to utilize that, they would be able to do it?
As long as you had the correct connectors, yes.
Okay.
And it comes, the installs we have are done with both VGA, which is the standard older-style computer connection, and HDMI, which is somewhat newer.
Okay.
You might, depending on whether people wanted to present, for example, if you had a lot of people that wanted to use iPads or iPhones, you could look into an Apple TV device that would connect to it that would allow them to do it wirelessly. You could also look into, once you decide on the system, you could buy a small bag of different cables that you have on hand, that you have the adapters for three or four different types of setups, and you just keep them with the unit.
So you can do Apple, Samsung, whatever?
Exactly.
Yeah, just by the cables.
And that's maybe another couple hundred dollars for all that connectivity?
Yes, Apple TVs are running about $79 now, and the cables, depending on where you order them from, from Amazon, you could probably pick up the cables you need for about another $75 to $100 to do almost everything.
Who else should we be talking to, Steve? I mean, Oakers is obviously, you've gone with Oakers at Silver Lake, so.
We've gone with Oakers, because they've consistently had the best price. They're on the state bid list, so they are under state contract. And we have, and I tend to be cheaper with the school's money than I am with my own, so I tend to go, every couple of installs, I go check, I'll check with Valley Communications, I'll check with a couple of the other companies that do the installs. There was one that was saying, "Free labor on your installation," and the first one would have been great, it would have saved us about $300, but the next six would have cost us an extra $300 a piece.
Would you be willing to check some quotes for us for, you know, so we had more than one vendor that we're looking at?
Yeah, if you want to contact the vendors and get the quotes, I'll be happy to go over them for you.
Okay.
So you would just do apples to apples, right? If we decide if we're going to go with a projector, you're going to ask them just to bid out a projector?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we want the same thing.
Yes, you'll want to do apples to apples, yes. And there are cheaper projectors out there. Silver Lake had all NEC projectors when they were built, and I could have replaced them with NEC projectors for probably $50 to $75 a piece cheaper than I did with the Epsons. But the NEC projectors, the bulbs are $300 to $400 a piece, the Epsons are $79.
If people are doing, come in and want to do a presentation, how would you lay out the room? Would you want this, the podium over there with the dock camera over there, or does it make any difference?
You could certainly have it set up there if you chose to, it depends on how you're going to do it. If it's going to be a permanently mounted projector, then your connections would all be in one spot, and you'd probably want a microphone and a little table for a laptop where you have it. If it's going to be a rolling cart, then it would depend on where you set it.
Wouldn't the projector be up here, like you've got at the school?
If it's a wall-mounted, yes it would, but if you're going with the mobile cart, it attaches to the cart.
Oh, it does.
So that the entire setup is movable from place to place.
Would it make sense to have a mobile whiteboard without, and still have the projector up here, and just have a regular whiteboard?
No. Because the whiteboard needs to be in the same spot every time you use the projector. And if the projector's on the wall, you're never going to get the whiteboard flat against the wall, so your alignment will be off. Those projectors are designed to project on a flat surface directly below them, so anything further out is going to be a problem.
Okay, do you have an idea?
Just so you know, I can hit that wall just fine.
Okay.
With that camera.
Perfect, great. Thanks for letting us know.
Excellent.
Good. Okay.
So it sounds more like a permanent than a mobile.
And the other thing you can do is, you can also do the LCD TV on a mobile stand, too. It doesn't have to be just the projection system on the mobile stand. The one advantage of the mobile is if you wanted to do something in a different room, you could. I don't know what functions you do in here, or various parts of the building, but one thing I mentioned to John is that with a setup in here, you could also have, if the library wanted to do a video presentation for kids, you could have an event in the afternoon in here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too, going to be fun, different groups to come in here and show a movie or something on that, yeah.
Just watch the popcorn and the show on the carpet.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess we got something in there.
Yeah, I think we do, we just.
The projection, the whiteboard that they're proposing for the projection system is four by eight. So if it were lower, it would also give you the advantage of having a whiteboard in the room that you could then use for notes, for whatever. But what I would suggest is you take someone's average reach, and I may not be the best example, but if you're going interactive.
We've got three of us.
You reach as high as you can and say, "This would be the top of the whiteboard," and then measure down and see where it comes.
Okay. What is the whiteboard itself, what's the cost for that, just a whiteboard?
I think Oakers expected around $300, it should be right on that $375.
So if we wanted to permanently mount the whiteboard, we could still get another whiteboard for another room, if we wanted to have everything else on a mobile cart, where we could move the projector, but still have the whiteboards mounted?
Well, the whiteboard mounts to the cart itself.
But if we didn't go with a cart, we mounted it on the wall for the whiteboard, could we use the projector, would that be mobile?
No, well, I mean, you could have a cart that sits out in front of the projector, yes.
Okay.
I don't recommend that, because then whenever you have to set up, you have cords running across the room, it's always, it's never permanently set up.
Gotcha.
Someone's always moved it from one place to another.
Okay.
We'd probably ask some of the meetings that take place to be in here, when we're not here. You know, most, it seems like everybody goes in the other room, because it's smaller, a little more intimate. Couldn't they do this, and then they'd have the full use of the system?
The board, exactly.
Pull up a. I can imagine some problems with mobile. Time, money, wrong room, dropping the thing.
Things disappearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Or just being left, you know, in the wrong place, and then when you go to use it.
Who's responsible for it?
Right, exactly.
And just having this setup and this being the place that that kind of stuff is available makes a lot of sense.
Right, this is the biggest room and the most seating, it's got the, it's wired for cable.
Just to give you an idea, that is what the mobile carts look like.
Oh, wow. Oh, so that's the projector right up there?
Yes.
Whoops, I lost it. I should not operate the whiteboard. Oh, very cool. All right, I get it now, I didn't really get it.
Now, the projector would be much closer to the board on the system they're proposing.
Okay.
It would not be sticking out nearly as far, that's an older model.
And that's, is that four by eight roughly?
No, that's probably four by six. A four by eight on a mobile cart, you wouldn't do.
Wow.
Boy, it is kind of turnkey, isn't it?
It is. So what would you do? You have the computer then wired to the projector?
Yes, with that, there's a little table on it for a laptop.
Okay.
And you'd just have it wired in and.
Oh, that is nice. That's nice.
Depending on what sound system.
What don't you like?
It's just a style thing. It's a concrete, in place, ready to go, kind of appeals to me more than wheeling around.
Aesthetically, I agree, it's not as aesthetically pleasing, and when you walk into this room, it's really a nice room.
Yeah.
Having a big mobile cart sitting there aesthetically wouldn't be as nice, but again, it depends on your usage. If you're saying, "I really would like to wheel it to another room to use it," that answers the question.
The other thing I like is.
Thank you, that's really interesting.
I like the whiteboard idea, because we don't know how it's going to be used. You know, people get up there and they start marking it up, they use the wrong markers.
That's, yeah, that's happened.
I hate the thought of having them do it to a TV, and then find out we've made a problem for ourselves.
Yeah.
If the whiteboard is permanent, it's less vulnerable to being mishandled in a way.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that concerns me really about the.
The other thing is with the whiteboard, if something happens, it's a $400 replacement.
Exactly.
If something happens to the glass on a LCD TV, that's a lot more.
Yeah.
Well, the TV screen isn't as big either as the four by eight.
Well, the projection set will probably be roughly six inches shorter than the 80-inch diagonal LCD, the projected area on the whiteboard. It wouldn't fill the whiteboard, if it would have come close.
Well, based on this room, and the intent that we're going to be using it for presentations, probably not heavily used, what would you recommend?
I would probably tend to go then for the projection myself, because.
With the whiteboard?
With the whiteboard. It gives you dual functionality. You have the whiteboard if you don't need to do presentations, someone may make notes. If you go with a magnetic whiteboard, which I don't know if that's what they proposed, you could always clip agendas up there or stick things on there. You could have a section that you just make notes for the meeting, for people to notice when they come in. If you have a LCD TV, it's only going to give you functionality when you have to present.
Yeah. I like the idea of the whiteboard.
I don't know.
The idea that we can use it when we're not using the projector, that we can just be brainstorming some things.
Well, and it's not as expensive, and it's a good way for us to get some technology and just kind of get in the door without making a big investment.
And that's, the other thing is, when the bulb goes on the projection set, you change it yourself. You buy the bulb for $89, $79, whatever that one is. You open the box, it has the little tool in it, you unscrew a screw, you pop out the old, pop in the new, it's done. On the LCD ones, if you have an issue, you have to have them come back, dismount it, take it in for service.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And yes, other things can fail on the projector, but it's been very rare. I have, every elementary classroom, Kingston, Plimpton, and Halifax uses these projectors. And the ones we put in Kingston when I first started over five years ago, were just starting to swap out, because they're getting to that age. But they're also used virtually every day, six hours a day.
Right, right, the classroom presentation, yeah. Teaching lesson, yeah. It's pretty exciting stuff.
It is, you know, we've got the grant, it's in the grant, we can use that. I think if we go a little bit low-tech with the whiteboard solution, it'd be fun.
You could end up saving a little money if you have someone in building maintenance that would come in and install the whiteboard for you. I don't know if you have someone that would be able to cut the strips to raise it out past the chair rail so it could go lower?
I don't know, I saw, you know, the one at the Denit that we saw was a little wavy, because the whiteboard wasn't situated correctly.
That wall was also a concrete wall that wasn't level.
Right, I'd rather get somebody in town who's a, you know, craftsman and come in and just do it for us.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, Oakers didn't install that one, the maintenance people at Denit did. But, but again, it was because the wall wasn't perfectly level, and they didn't notice it till it was glued up there.
Right.
If you look at it when it's off, it looks perfect.
Yeah, exactly.
What do you think, Mark?
I would be totally content with the whiteboard, I'd be totally content with the fixed operation, I'd be totally content with moving forward.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's a good plan.
So maybe, Steve, I could work with you to get all the pieces, like the cables also, so we have a full, we know exactly what 100% it's going to cost when we say, "Okay, let's go forward." Great.
Well, I know what Oakers does with their install, and I can certainly touch base with the salesman, or you could even email him back to Mario, I have his email address on the email I forwarded, and say, "Would like to go ahead with the interactive version of the projector." And, or you'd like to be re-quoted for the interactive version.
Yeah, I would, I want to make sure that, you know.
Yeah, you can decide on the whiteboard install, whether you'd like to do it yourself, which would certainly save their labor.
Yeah.
And it would also, I don't know as they would be as inclined to be able to cut the strips and make it as neat. And the installs in the classrooms are wonderful, they're neat, they're clean, they look good. But the classrooms aren't a space like this.
Right.
Yeah, we want this to look really professional after we're done.
So the projector would be installed right on the wall, right?
Yes.
Okay.
On the wall or on the ceiling?
On the wall.
On the wall, okay.
Whereas this room probably has very high ceilings up above, installing on the ceiling could be tricky, because you're going to have to run cables all the way up and.
Okay.
We don't want to be up there anyway, I think.
No.
We don't want to be disturbing.
Whatever up there.
Yeah. The mice, we're going with mice, we don't want to disturb the mice.
That sounds good. So that we would always be set and ready to go for whoever wanted to use it?
Yep.
Okay.
One thing, again, I don't know if you have building maintenance type people or whatever, the whiteboard would probably start just to the left of that plug. They can run the cord down around the edge of the whiteboard and plug in there. If you wanted to have someone put a plug up near the ceiling that they could just plug into, so you don't have that cord running down, that would be up to you.
Okay.
Functionally wise, you'll still get the same functionality, and that can also be something you decide.
Okay.
You put it in beside it and say, "In a year, we don't like it, let's, we're having electrical work done anyway, let's have someone do that."
Great.
But what they would end up doing, when you decide where you want your presentation stationed, which could be basically on either side of the whiteboard, you would set up a little table or podium there for the laptop. There'll be a connector box on the wall that has your VGA, your audio, your HDMI connectors on it, that people can just plug into, you leave the laptop plugged in when you want it there.
Yeah.
And with a Kensington lock, which is a cable lock that locks into the laptop, you could attach it to a leg of the table or some bracket, so.
Okay, so it's there.
It doesn't walk off.
Okay.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, glad to help.
Appreciate it, yeah.
So how quickly, when we decide which way to go, how quickly can this happen?
I know when we order, Oakers is usually running two to three weeks, from the time they get our purchase order to the time it's installed. The summer is their busiest time, they have all the schools ordering and also. You're going to see probably more, if you were to send them a PO today, you'd probably be four to five weeks. Once school starts after.
We were done by September 1st, September 13th.
Oh, jeez, that'd be fantastic, yeah. Do they offer any summer specials? Or can we tag on with a school order or something?
Unfortunately, we did the projectors, so we're not doing anything in Plimpton this year.
All right, very good.
You've shared a lot of time with us, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Great information.
Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Do we want to do whatever?
Yes.
We just keep moving, so we don't have to.
Did you want to talk to us, Barbara?
This is about transfers?
I said, if you were around, you know, we always like to see back.
And the only thing I will pass on for information has been come, signed all the transfers tonight, including the sheets that you have. So I have this signed copy here.
These are closing up the transfers between, you know.
This is just three lines that are being moved from one place to the other, the end of the year transfers.
Okay.
And you recommend these?
I would hope you would sign them, yes.
Okay.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
I do, I'll make a motion, we approved the three end-of-the-year transfers that we've received.
As recommended by the town accountant?
Yeah.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Barbara, very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to take this with you?
It makes it nice and easy.
Do you want those signed?
Do you want this sheet signed, and then they're all on one? We may have this one if you want.
Oh, this signed and that, I'll just put the two of them.
Good night.
Good night, thank you, Barbara.
Thanks, Barb.
Okay.
So do we need what we, do we know what we need to move ahead with a...
That's what I wanted to go over with Steve, is give them exact, you know, whiteboard, cables, projector. We know...
This isn't an interactive system. John's going to have Okers quote us an interactive system so that we've got a... And talk about the mounting and all of that, so we have a more of a firm number.
I think the mounting we probably should do with somebody other than Okers, first of all. I assume they're going to be more expensive. And we do want to make sure it's perfect.
Yeah, I mean, maybe somebody could even build a frame for it, so it was level and out a little bit from the wall.
So there's, you know, that much with the chair rail. Since we're going to have to come down below the chair rail, we're going to have to have strips coming down to kind of mount it.
Well, there's no shortage of carpenters here in Plimpton, so...
That's right, and good people.
Excellent.
Okay, well, we're getting there.
Okay. All right, so we've got the Assistant Assessor at 6:45 to talk about solar. So do we want to move on to legal counsel, next item on the agenda?
Sure.
All right, well, we had, we had nice meetings with both KP Law and Rich Bowen last week. We met with KP Law on Tuesday, Lauren Goldberg and Greg Corbo. And then on Wednesday, we met with Rich Bowen, and I thought they were both good meetings, a lot of excellent information.
Yeah. I guess two things came to mind. When is the Cisco abatement filing we're going to talk about with the assessors? Who should be doing that? I guess my interaction with Rich Bowen has been from quite a long time ago, except as a moderator. So I wasn't aware, as aware of his expertise in that area. And I gather you've had some, so I don't know if he's the right person or if KP... I do feel a little uncomfortable with the KP, only from the sense, and it wasn't a KP's fault as much, as the insurance company that we used when we were going forward with, I'm trying to think what it was now, was it Rocky Horror?
Rocky Horror.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. But KP was overseeing that. I mean, it was their decision, right?
No, it was actually, it, because it was a civil rights case, it went to, it triggered insurance. So our insurance was providing legal. Yes. They were, they took over and, yeah, so it wasn't KP Law.
Because I don't think they did a good job.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Okay, okay.
And KP Law, Alana said the same thing.
So my only concern, I guess, is as soon as we can, and I think we need as much clarity as we can have and pass it on. I, I hope we are certainly continuing with K and P, and I hope we can reassure them that, and at the same time, we can find a way to move Rich in. I certainly see the pitfalls here, and I think it does feel a little muddy and I, as best we can, I don't want KP to feel like they're second fiddle. In terms of counsel for the Cisco abatement, it feels to me like it might be worth at least checking with Greg and seeing what he had to say about in-house help. I mean, Rich has told us he's an expert, and I suspect he is, but I think maybe we owe the courtesy to K and P to just ask them about it.
Well, I thought we had.
Well, we did briefly discuss that, and when the, when Deb sent us an email alerting us to this, neither Rich or KP Law were her list of three attorneys. So I would just suggest that she reach out to KP Law for a quote from them on representation and Rich Bowen, so that we have a full picture of representation. But I, in meeting with them, it, talking with both of them, it seems clear that we're going to stay with KP Law as town council, and that we will find a way to utilize, utilize Rich's expertise to assist us as well.
Yeah, I think the idea of the communications meeting with the department heads and having Rich sit in on that is a start. And then we'll see if it works. If it doesn't work six months down the road, then, you know, we'll know.
Right, we'll know. And it's, it's really more than just a communications meeting. It's like an initial strategy.
Yes, exactly.
Just kind of, I think we've got to come up with a way to, or what we're going to name these meetings, because it's more than communications. It's, you know, discussion of issues that are facing the board so that we can talk about strategy early, and hopefully Rich can point us in the right direction, whether or not we need to see KP Law, or whether we should be looking at state agencies to assist us. And that's, I think, kind of what we're looking for, some direction.
I, I think a title to that meeting, I, whatever, proactive legal strategies, something that gives the theme, so we...
So we're clear, right, and...
Why don't we have a contest?
Name the meeting. What are we going to call the meeting?
Hey, kids.
And actually, that meeting is, as time flies by, is not so far away.
It's not so far away.
Have we set anything up? We haven't.
No, no, because we were going to talk about this tonight, and I think we were talking, what?
August 9th, which is probably four weeks away. So we'll probably have to let people know.
And we're going to have to know what they plan on discussing too, because there may be issues that we won't be able to discuss in an open session. Or if we're posted, then it would be an open meeting, where if it was just department heads, it wouldn't have to be a posted meeting. So that would be the only benefit to not having a posted meeting, is that you might be able to have more open dialogue, because it wouldn't be posted. Just food for thought.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like for all three of us to be there, and I think...
I feel like on that one, we need to...
I think so too, that we need to be informed as to what's going on, but we may have to...
I think we're smart enough, if somebody starts to go down some, you know, a rat hole, we realize right away, whoa, we got a problem. This needs an executive session, then we just...
Well, and Rich would be there too, so...
Yeah, he's the one who's going to tell us.
Yeah, hey, we can't talk about this.
Right.
Well, and I think just really clear ground rules at the beginning of the meeting, that this is being moderated by this board, and that we can turn the discussion anywhere in the direction we want it to be. I mean, it's our meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think people will be cooperative, and I definitely think we should all be here for this one, because we're feeling our way and how we're going to make best use of this.
And we've got to make it sure it's worth their time. Nobody wants to show up to a meeting and just have it be a dog and pony meeting.
Right.
We really got to work it.
Well, and having us all there to help increase the communication with, with all of us, where we all have a better idea of what's going on and what issues are facing other boards.
Which may be another one of the ground rules, is that as best possible, we want to keep the discussion broad enough that everyone's benefiting, rather than, you know...
Right, one person can't log the whole meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. All right, so do we want Bree to send out a memo to let people know that we have this scheduled?
You want me to take a shot at writing one?
Sure. And then we would just like to know who's going to be attending and what topics they're going to have for discussion?
I'll draft something up.
So that we can be prepared?
Everybody?
Perfect.
So we're at some point presumably getting back to K and P?
I can get back to K and P, and that we're going to continue with them as town council.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Perfect.
And that we love them, and we hope they'll be nice to us.
Yeah, they've done, they've done a nice job for us, and they've been...
Don't make it so binding, though, that we're locked in.
Well, it's, we have a one-year contract with them, don't we?
Do we?
No.
Didn't, no.
It's an open end, isn't it?
We have not had, I haven't seen a contract with them for years.
Well, they, we sent out the RFP, and they were the only respondent. Did we sign any, did we sign anything with them, or were we at like kind of a tenant at will?
I think we tended at will.
It was just a year. It was for a year.
So we did sign something with them? Yeah, we did.
Yeah. Don't remember.
It might have been before you were on the board, John.
No, I don't think so. No.
Okay.
But anyways.
I don't, I don't remember either. Okay, but I do remember seeing the RFP and their response. Okay, so while she's doing that, you want to move on to Community Paradigm?
Sure.
All right, so we meet with Bernie tomorrow at 7:00 P.M. to talk about, negotiate what the scope and fees are going to be for his services, and if we can get that squared away, possibly get started to in the process. So that's what we're proposing for with him tomorrow.
And that's at 7:00, right?
That's at 7:00.
Okay. No, I think that's Will's statement.
Okay, so then we've got Cisco abatement filing. Why don't we hold on to that until we meet with the Assistant Assessor? Fire and EMS, hire consultant and fire clerk applications.
So I don't know anything, whether anybody's applied for the fire clerk yet position, so we can just hold that. But the consultant now for fire and EMS, that's the next step.
Right.
I guess we need to start thinking about, how do we bring them in? Do we want to start putting them on the next meeting?
Yeah, why don't we get started like we did with the town administrator, just schedule them one every...
Okay, we have four.
Okay.
Okay.
But we could even do two, depending on how tight our schedule is.
I will admit, I haven't looked very closely. Are we feeling like we need to see all four?
We, actually, there's one that is over our budget. They were way over. We went up to it and said, wait a minute, I think you missed the scope of it. They came back and they're still over what was approved. So I assume we could just weed them out if we want. On the other hand, they're knowledgeable, so I...
Thank you.
No, I think my only sense is sort of the theme of, you know, getting it moving and not overwhelming ourselves. And if they're not in, in the realm, then why not go with the other three?
There's two that definitely, that we want to talk to. They've done it before, as, as did this, this other one. And then there is attorney Ernest Hawn. And the reason we have him in the mix is that he was in public safety, and when the ambulance study was originally done, he came in and critiqued the result. And apparently, people were very impressed, and it turned out, a lot of things he said turned out to be.
And that, I sat in on those meetings with the ambulance review committee, and that guy was sorry into the future. I mean, he got it exactly right.
I think we want him in the mix.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. If you want, I can go back to the other one and say, you know, you're outside our budget if you can't come in with a reduced amount. My only fear is that, you know, if they start scoping it back, I'm not sure what we get.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be the worst thing. It's not that much different looking at three than four, right?
Maybe like Christine said, maybe we do two a night?
Yeah, we do two a night, because we want you here, and you've got some traveling coming up, don't you?
I'll be away next week. At worst, I could look at the video. I think the more of this stuff we get decided in the next three or four weeks, so it's moving forward, the better.
I wouldn't mind skipping a week just to get, you know, while you're away. Okay, so when you're back, we're all here.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I'd rather do that too.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'm not adverse to, you know, an extra meeting either, just to keep it going.
True, true, okay.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, we could. We could even schedule them off meeting nights, maybe like a Tuesday, Wednesday, like we did.
Doing a hell of a good job of going every other week, aren't we? We're, oh, we're reading that, Rod. It's like three a week.
Three a week, yeah. Is this summer or not? Okay, so we, oh, do we have any applications for the fire clerk? Are you aware? And do we have it advertised?
It's on the town website. It was done in, I don't know, it's communications now.
Okay.
They changed the name, but did you want it in, I can talk to Deb, we'll put it in the paper.
I think maybe we should, if we haven't gotten any responses. Yeah, let's put it in the paper.
It's a good idea.
I'm sorry that I stepped out of that.
Oh, no worries.
We were just talking about the consultant.
Okay. We just talked, that we're meeting with them tomorrow. That's it. Okay, so this was, doesn't look like we signed anything. So it looks like, let's see, it is proposed that the town council services listed in the fees and expenses response sheet, a single blended hourly rate of a hundred and seventy dollars an hour through June 30th, 2017, and a hundred and seventy-five dollars for fiscal year 2018. So it looks like till next June 30th. There is the option in here for the, looks like thirty-six thousand, the retainer, which we never really, I think we looked at that before?
We did talk about it, yeah. We did talk about it, but I think we decided that we weren't sure enough whether that was the right way to go.
And I think we should wait on that decision until we get a town administrator and see how that person's feeling too.
Good advice, good advice. Yeah, and I just don't know, in talking to them, if the retainer covered the type of help we need from them. Because there wasn't anything that was, anything with litigation that this covered. This was more basic.
It seemed like it would set up a potentially contentious relationship, you know, what's covered, what isn't covered.
Yeah, there are a couple of local towns that got into huge issues. Duxbury for one on that, but just got into a lot of trouble. We got enough trouble.
Yeah, we do.
We're going along fine, month to month. We know their town council will use them.
Perfect, okay. Hi, Deb.
Hi there, how are you today?
Good. Do you want to come up to the podium?
Oh, sure.
Hello, how are you doing, Dick?
Wow, hey.
Good to see you.
Okay, I printed the spreadsheet that I had sent to everybody, and also... Well, I think pretty good, John.
I think she's a good fit.
This is a list on two sides of every residential and commercial solar implementation in Plimpton.
Really?
Yes. You might find that interesting. So on the bottom of that list of the commercial, this is another crappy, enlarged print on the spreadsheet.
Great, that's, that's great.
There are a few pieces of information that I'm still seeking. Okay, these are the questions that I send out to the solar companies for the commercials. These are, the state prepares these, so these are recommended by DOR.
Thank you.
Or suggested that we don't negotiate unless we have it. So, Dick, did you have this last one? And Mark just asked me to come, so I'm not quite sure what I'm speaking to.
And actually, I think the request came from John as such, and maybe for a little bit of a setup. CEC, which is doing the project on 190 Brook Street, is, we are in the midst of negotiation. The two major issues are the actual written agreement, and I spoke to town council. Rick Holland is covering, Rich Holland is covering this, and he got back to me today, his latest markup of the agreement. CEC's representative is on vacation until early August, so I guess that'll be on hold until then. So that's issue number one, the legal document. And then issue number two is the valuation out of which we can develop the recommendation for the, the payment in lieu of taxes. As I understand it, that valuation can be done either on the basis of the equipment is personal property, or it can be done on the basis of...
Income approach evaluation.
Income, or some hybrid, and that's where we're at. And I think what triggered the request for Deb was to come in was these documents and maybe us getting a little clearer on what they mean.
Yeah, I'm a novice, so educate me.
I don't know any city in town that has negotiated a pilot based on personal property. One of the primary reasons is you can't lean personal property. So if the value's based on personal property and the payments stop, you have no recourse. The state does, DOR recommends the income approach evaluation. I have their spreadsheet to use based on this information request that you have in your hand. That's the information required, then you can develop an income approach. And I made some calls to some of the local towns that Halifax and Pembroke have just negotiated pilots, or they might still be drawing. And they both use the income approach to valuation. So in, in developing the income approach, what's being talked about a bit right now in the association is you might consider year one a lower value, because the pilots, you know, do increase the total valuation, the levy, because we have to back into a valuation. So if you, you know, don't take the hit on the first year, the big hit, you know, I mean, if you have a twenty-five year with twenty-five, you know, even payments, you might want to go down a little bit in the first year and make it up in, you know, year ten or something, just because it can have an impact. Especially, we've been, you know, as I've said to some of the assessors, you know, we seem to be the mecca for solar right now. Nobody I've spoken with has as many solar farms as we do, although Dartmouth certainly has its share too.
So how does, I guess I'm missing something. How does that work when you say, go down in the first year and pick it up later? What are we doing when we do that?
Well, the value the town has assigned to the solar project, because you have to support the pilot amount with an appraised value based on the income approach. So you have valuation for it, and that valuation increases the levy the year you bring it on. So if your value the first year is a percentage of the total, then it's not as hit, I mean, you can continue to raise appropriate funds, you know, I mean, to the total of the levy. So if you don't want to continue to bump that levy every time, because of course, if you have levy capacity and, you know, everybody comes in with their hand raised, and you try to satisfy it all, that impacts the tax rate. So by keeping it, you know, negotiating it so the first year isn't quite as strong, there's no regulation against that. You can negotiate the payment terms as you want, as long, you know, it's the total value that you're getting. But, you know, or you can do the steady stream, either way. I mean, the steady stream works very well, too.
Yeah, and, you know, we're below the levy. We have...
So it's not as impactful.
Right. I mean, the finance committee, I think, and us have made a decision that we don't want, we have the ability, I think, to go up like eight to 10%.
Right.
And obviously, we're not going to raise taxes by that. That's crazy.
That's crazy.
So Finance Committee, I think, has been very good about holding down, even though theoretically, we could raise it. And it's a buffer if you ever needed an emergency, but, so I'm not sure it does anything for us in this scenario.
Yeah, so you can, you know, certainly do the steady stream over 30 years. You know, the, what has been proposed, and when I looked at it, you know, the first 10 years are the higher amounts, but then it drops significantly after that. So then your revenue has dropped off, but, you know, you're factoring in a certain amount of revenue every year, so then you have decreasing revenue. If you had four or five of them with decreasing revenue at the same time, that might impact it. You know, so, you know, the steady stream probably is the best way for you to negotiate.
And have we done the other ones that way?
They're all steady stream.
They're all steady?
And that's what, in my spreadsheet, you know, the pilot amount is the annual amount. So in the third section, pilot amount, that's the annual pilot payment. And then they're broken into quarterlies. And then the total pilot over the life of it, X number of years. And, you know, the new, the newer panels have a much, have a longer life expectancy than those early ones. So I can see the 25-year pilot term is probably more appropriate now than it would have been in 2012 when the first pilot was negotiated.
So do you feel that the payment amounts on these other projects has been fair to both sides?
I would say if you look across the fourth line total per kilowatt hour, all but one is pretty much, they're all, all the rest are, you know, within a very small variance.
So, I mean, without getting into specifics of negotiation, that would maybe want to do an executive session, if we were aiming for a similar area, would be on target?
I think you would. I'm waiting for one town who will release the terms of theirs as soon as the selectmen sign it. And I think it's within a couple of weeks, they're anticipating that. So I might also be able to obtain a second one from another local town. So that would be the most current terms that we could use as, you know, at least to review that.
Can we go down one of these, just so I understand all the...
Sure.
Say 117 Lake Street?
Sure.
Project acreage, I should understand that. Project size MW DC, what does that mean?
Megawatts.
Okay.
AC.
AC and DC?
Right, the AC is, yeah, project size megawatts, AC and DC, right. And then the annual generation is in AC. I'm still, the last three on Brook Street, one, two, and three, I don't, haven't received that information yet. And I know it, I have it somewhere from what, not near Brook Street, so I'll pull that up.
And capacity factor, how is that figured?
That's the percent of the annual generation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, 1300 kilowatt hours of production. Capacity factor, I think, actually is the cap, the top amount of capacity generated by the, that's why I just printed out the carvout, because, no, capacity factor isn't on this version of the, the nameplate, oh, it is, the nameplate capacity, the pound four. And that's what N* star has...
Accepted.
That's what the capacity to generate, if, if they had perfect sunlight, that would be the capacity factor.
Okay, okay.
And they're running much higher than they used to. It used to be 91 to 93%. I think they're even higher than that now, capacity factor.
And then you said the pilot amount, in this case, 18,000 some odd, is the yearly or the quarterly?
That's the annual, and then it's divided, you know, for quarterly payments.
Yep.
And then there's the per kilowatt AC. And that's essentially a one-megawatt AC, so that's why it's 1.4 AC.
Okay. And do we know why Lake Street was different, or just an anomaly? That was just what was negotiated?
Yes. Dick and I were involved in the first negotiation for the four-megawatt. Dick's fabulous at reviewing all of the documentation and from the town perspective and from the assessing perspective. So if you want somebody else on your committee to review, Dick's very good.
Great.
Quite adept. He worked closely with John Henry.
Okay, great.
And the number of panels, I'm, you know, trying to obtain all of the project costs and permitting fees from the building department, so I'll have, and we don't have any net metering. That was originally when we were negotiating that meeting, metering with, for the first project. And then that went away, so that's not part of the negotiations anymore, because our net metering capacity has been met, right?
So the contract we're looking at is going to be done on this income basis?
Well, I think, you know, I've just taken this up that Dale's left. Originally, there was a depreciation chart, and Rayo, the CEC representative, thought that was kind of aggressive. I have gotten this stuff from you last week and passed that on to him. He'll be away for a couple of weeks. I have a feeling he thought we were still considering the personal property way of going. And so I think we've, I've made clear to him that, that all of our projects are done by the income method, and that seems to be preferred by our assessors. And so as soon as he gets back, we'll see how he feels about that. I think, as I understand it, he was maybe somewhat reluctant on some of the requests for information.
Most of the others have given me all the information.
Okay, but he, there was some reluctance, so you don't have it all at this one?
No.
Okay, I mean, this thing...
Sorry, Terry was one of the common responses from him.
Okay. I mean, this, the back and forth between the attorney and town coordinator has been going on for a year and a half. And I think we're all anxious now to just get this done. So as soon as he's back, I'll be back. I've sent that along, and I think the quicker we can move this along, it'll be good for all of us to just get it done.
But also, he's going to be coming back and back in town with others, so, you know, I don't recommend that you even consider the personal property approach.
Understood. And I'm totally fine. If we've done all the others that way, it's the only way we can compare apples to apples. The more we can understand what the heck we're getting into, the better.
Right.
So I'm, I'm fine with that, for everyone else.
And if they come back and say some of the information, let's see, in the RFI, on the back page, they've gone for financing, all of this information is available. And also, what I would strongly suggest is that you require the landowner to provide a copy of the lease. We had those in the past, and we're getting some pushback on them, because the assessors, we value the land as income-producing land, and we use, you know, developed a schedule based on the averages of the lease amounts per acre, which, if you have it on some and you don't have it on others, some people have been very forthcoming and provided them right up, as soon as I asked for them, they've, they've sent them off. And they, you know, they typically are recorded at the registry of deeds, but sometimes not until after this has been negotiated.
Yeah, finalized.
Okay. So as I said, I have, I have the lease amount from several. Not every one of them, but I'm still digging. But there was a gap in communication, and then Dale understood that, that we really needed that. And especially if it's in chapter, because I sent it over to DOR Legal and asked them to review. And their language back to me was that when a landowner notifies the board of selectmen that they're withdrawing a certain number of acres from chapter, and it's typically based on a sale of, you know, a sale of the land, but a lease is a change of use. So what they have to do is also provide in that notification a copy of the purchase and sale. We're lacking a purchase and sale, a copy of the lease they said was required, and that the selectmen should not accept the notification unless the financial document is included.
Okay.
And we, last year, last couple of years, we've had a couple that didn't include that. And, you know, it shouldn't have been, that's why I reached out to Legal, so I have a legal opinion on it.
Okay.
And, you know, to share that with you, so you know in your negotiations that some of these documents, like, you know, the RFI, this was developed by Bureau of Local Assessments and the Legal Bureau.
Okay, perfect.
So we didn't, we didn't come up with that. It's used throughout the state.
Are there any gotchas that we should be really, that's one that we should make sure of. Anything else that we should be really keen on?
In conversation with the building department, there is information that, you know, Tom is now requiring to develop his valuing, his permit fee.
Okay.
And then also the permit fee for the electrical. You know, so there's, we've all learned as this has evolved.
Sure, sure.
So they can speak to you specifically about what they're looking for in that regard. But just to ensure that the town does realize each individual revenue stream associated with this.
Yeah. Sounds like a great deal.
Excuse me, yeah, and, you know, as I said, we're communicating on that. So it's also, and I'm pleased that I'm now in the email stream with the pilot and the requests. And do you want me to CC all of you if one of you, yeah, so that's what, and my board also will be CC, just so, you know, all the loops, in BRI, all the loops will be closed. So everybody would have that same information. And I would recommend maybe that, you know, something, not the RFI, but, you know, maybe a document such as that with the information from the permitting, that, you know, you could obtain so you can see what the permitting fees have, the revenue generated from those. And I could add that line, you know, I'm trying to, as I said, the permitting fees I have on, that total is for the three Brook Streets, so one, two, Brook Street, one, two, and three.
That's the total for all three, huh?
Right, that was the total of all three. They are individually named, but some of the information came in in total.
We learned that one.
Yes, we did. You know, and every time we, I just modify my spreadsheet and say, okay, this is what we need. And, you know, I'd notify you, let me know if you're close on finalizing, and if there's anything I'm missing for information, I would definitely, you know, Dale was very good. And this is the same person that Dale really had to, to push to have us obtain information.
This is great information.
Yeah, and I think he was slow, and I think he's ready to do it now. And while he seems to be motivated, we can try to be motivated, too, and just...
Well, that's right, yeah. I mean, we can all work together on it.
Right. I mean, it's very much to their advantage to get this done, even more, either way, we're going to, we're going to end up with taxes or a pilot, but it's to their advantage to know what to expect and project.
Right. So, you know, and any questions, let me know when I can...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in to talk about that.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to move on to the Cisco abatement? Can we talk briefly about that one, too?
Sure, yes. And I just received a proposal for the, oh my gosh, for the appraisal today. And a top-notch appraiser. And I've taken some of the classes he's taught at the appraisers, Mass Board of Real Estate Appraisers. He came highly regarded by the attorney that I, whom I spoke with. So his proposal was $12,000 plus $300 an hour for trial prep and trial attendance, which I had another estimate, it was $20,000, so.
So you've reached out, you've gotten three estimates, right?
Two, I only had two responses.
Oh, two, okay. Is it possible to reach out to Copman Page and ask them to provide you with a proposal as well?
Sure.
Okay. And then we'd like to do the same with Rich Bowen, who was, who is now his own, has his own practice.
What's his experience with commercial at ATV?
I believe it's pretty extensive. I don't know if you've got his resume on yet. We just met with him last week.
He sent us a memo in which he referenced it. I didn't think to bring it, I don't think.
Okay, well...
But we'll, we'll send it to you. Rich was town council for Plimpton back...
With KP Law, back in the late 80s, 90s, early 90s, yeah.
So he's familiar with Plimpton, but apparently, this is one of his expertise, but we'll send you the information, and then you can see. But we'd like to at least run it by and see.
Yeah, I'll send for a proposal. Okay.
All right, that works.
So, how are we going to pay for this?
Well, we, you know, there was no way to project, and we don't know how far this will go.
So it's in nobody's budget anywhere?
No, and that's for the last two years, you know, speaking with VinCom, you just have to, I just have to continue to say, this is on the horizon.
This is what?
On the horizon.
Okay.
And that's why, you know, now it's just coming with a trial date. They're not, the, the tax rep for Cisco hasn't, no, that he doesn't, that he has a strong case. We should be exchanging the information. And he said, well, we sent it to you two years ago. Well, I didn't think what they sent me two years ago was sufficient, but I had, you know, probably a half-hour conversation with the tax attorney that whom I spoke with, and we worked through that. You know, it's all a game, of course. So, you know, we did work through that. This person just tried a very large case for the town of Duxbury, and has won some pretty big cases.
So the quotes you got are for appraisal, separate are the legal fees, which could easily turn into that amount again.
Right, and we're just going to have an hourly rate on that. We're not going to have any idea how that goes. I mean, I've, in the past, you know, when I was in Hanover, we, it took us two years to have a trial date to go forward with the Hanover Mall, which of course was the Cisco of Hanover at the time. which of course was the Cisco of Hanover at the time. And finally said, no more continuances because, you know, there's interest, interest pockets ticking on those. So, we did go in and trial lasted a day and we had a decision in three weeks for the town. But that's because opposing counsel wasn't as strong by any means. And really hadn't put forward, you know, I mean, there were tables of documentation that I had to go in Boston and review because of course you couldn't ask for, you know, copies of all of that. But, you know, it was a big one, but I've been in on smaller properties that have gone two and a half days. So, it just depends on, you know, how many heels are in the ground and, you know, how many expert witnesses everybody has. You know, we'll have, we'll have the appraiser. That'll be it for our expert witness.
Okay. And a trial date has been set?
September 19th, yes.
Okay, so this is right around corner.
It's been postponed twice, three times.
Uh, who has asked for the postponement?
Cisco's tax rep asked for the postponement. We asked for one, they asked for the other two. And they asked for this one because the tax rep that we had been dealing with since 2013 left the company. So, his manager said, well, nobody else is up to speed, so we need another postponement. And I said, well, gee, I think we should just go right in in May. And of course, the board was gonna give them a postponement because it was a new player. But I didn't think they were prepared, so I wanted to kind of push it. My luck didn't work.
Where is the lawyer?
Ellen is out of the North Shore, but she does work throughout the South Shore for cities and towns.
No, I mean their lawyer?
Oh, their lawyer? I don't even know who their lawyer is yet.
Okay.
I haven't received that information.
It's probably some type of corporate.
And that's what I was wondering, if it was a corporate person. It's not.
Well, it depends. Sometimes it's an independent, I mean, the third person on my list is well up towards New Hampshire, but has excellent credentials as well. So, if I don't have, you know, if you want a third, that is my third person. There are many really good ones, but I know these people, I know their work. You know, I've been on either side with most of them, so I just, someone I respect.
Okay.
Okay.
And the person I, you know, is top on my list successfully defended the longest-running ATB case in state history. And there was a huge liability and the town had to pay less than $1,000 abatement.
Wow.
And it was on, you know, a twenty-s somewhat million dollar, which for the little town it was in, I mean, if it was a $20 million for us, it would be the same way.
Okay.
So, for the longest-running case in history, to be on the record books for that.
So, we should have a decision on this prior to the budget cycle for next year so that we'll have the right figures going into the budget?
You're gonna have to pay the bill in September.
Okay. No, the valuation of Cisco.
The valuation. I would hope we have a decision by that time. And they are coming more quickly, but this would have to be heard. One, there'll be one hearings officer, but three will deliberate the decision.
Okay.
You know, this is at a level that they would have three commissioners.
All right. I kinda hope it doesn't get postponed anymore, so we can just get this resolved.
Well, I'm pretty confident it will go in September.
Okay. Good. All right, so, do you want me just to reach out to Lauren Goldberg, see if we can get a proposal from KP Law? Or how about if I have them contact you?
Sure.
And Rich Bowen?
I'll let both the attorneys contact you, perfect.
I have an email that I've sent out, so I'll just copy and paste the same information and then.
Perfect.
Make you the response.
All right. Thank you so much for coming in.
Welcome.
That was informative.
Oh, good, anytime you have questions.
Thank you. All right, so, working down the agenda. Appointments and renewals for boards and committees for town clerk follow-up. Do we need to do anything with that, Bree?
No, she has a few. Just if we could remind people to come in.
Okay, to be sworn in?
Be sworn in.
Okay. Well, if we've appointed you, it's important for people to come in to be sworn in before you attend a meeting of your board or committee because you cannot vote. So, it's critical and, you know, while we absolutely appreciate people volunteering to serve on these committees, in order for us to function properly, everybody needs to complete the process. Complete your paperwork, so thank you very much. You can see Tara, and I think she, in extenuating circumstances, will make herself available for people, not, okay.
She does.
She does, so try to get here during the week or she's here Monday night. But if not, then maybe you can set up a time to meet with her.
Just to be reminded, we're on the summer schedule.
So, every other.
Off this week, they will be back on.
Okay. Okay, so this is an off week for the rest of the townhouse? Okay, okay, thank you. All right, Forty Ring Road, follow-up on trailer complaint. Do we have any follow-up?
No, me?
Okay, I don't either.
She has met with the Board of Health.
She is the person who owns the property or the trailer?
Property, yes. Met with Board of Health, they gave her requirements that they needed. And Kathy down in the building. So, they came in and I told them it's really out of our hands. We don't, it's not a selectmen issue. But they were all on the same board, we kind of sound stacked together. And no, they need approval for this trailer from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, it's the ZBA, right? If they need an extension, okay.
And that everything that she needs, so Board of Health was requiring her to have who was pumping. They did find out that there was a perk test that was done and it was approved and done with Webby and Mr., was it Wood?
Sure.
I'm not sure, the Board of Health, so.
Okay.
So, do we maybe need to just respond to Mr. O'Leary and let him know that we've referred him to those places?
We can wait for the follow-up to see if they've got everything and they've signed off on it. Kathy was just waiting. They closed this week.
But where it's not our issue, we could let him know that we've.
Yeah, I mean, just letting him know that we've considered it, directed people to the right places and we've discharged our responsibility.
Okay. Do you want to just let him know, Bree?
Sure.
Yeah, that we've, you know, thank you for his, making us aware and that the appropriate parties are working on this now.
Yeah.
To work on a resolution, okay.
Great.
Perfect. Okay, dog complaint, 622-17, 73 Mayflower Road. I believe we have a report from Frank, don't we? Okay, so notice of inspection completed, which was very good to hear.
Yep.
So, he viewed the animals described in the attached affidavit and in the presence of their owners. Found the three dogs, in his opinion, in healthy condition, which is a relief. And then, so this is just the administrative warrant, which we didn't end up needing because he was able to see the dogs without it. Did he send us a report as to whether or not he thinks we need to hold a hearing? What his recommendation was?
No.
Okay.
So, what do we do with Mr. Egan?
I think the one thing we probably need to do, so this went to Board of Health as well. So, either us or the Board of Health probably need to inform him that the quarantine period is over and those dogs are okay.
I would think that Kathy Driney would do it where she's kind of been the point of contact.
Isn't there something that came in from Kathy this afternoon?
About establishing protocols.
She, she sent it.
I didn't read it.
Many, eight documents, several of them from the Department of Public Health. A few of them, samples of Halifax's protocol with bites and with quarantines. I scanned them, I, one of the problems, I mean, it's good to have that stuff and it's good to have that as a starting point. And she does have one document on, as to whether administrative search warrants are needed or not or how to go about it, which was the other question. The only problem with that is I noticed the thing's 11 years old and it's different. Their protocol in Halifax is different than the legal advice we were given last week on how to go about this. So, that might need to get explored and reconciled. And I'm willing to take on, it would have to be a little proactively in the future, but take on maybe refining that and coordinating what we've heard from what Halifax does.
So, that's a start and then we'll refine it for ourselves.
Okay. So, are we gonna then leave this to Kathy Driney to work with? Contact Mr. Egan and let him know that the dogs?
Is that the right person?
Well, Mr. Egan was the one that was bitten, so he'd be the one that would wanna know.
No, I mean, is Kathy Driney the right person to contact?
I, you know, I honestly don't know. And I suppose in this case, it doesn't matter very much.
What is, is there anything in your paperwork?
You know, I don't, this was mainly on.
I wouldn't think it would be Frank. I would think it would either be maybe us or Kathy. But where it was a public health issue, because we didn't know whether or not he had been exposed to rabies, that's why I think it might be her.
Yeah, I think there's two sides. One is what you just mentioned, that public health side. And then there's the other side, which is the liability side.
Yeah. I kinda feel like from both those perspectives, Board of Health is the more expert and.
Okay, I don't disagree with that.
And if Mr. Egan has any further questions, Board of Health would be the first place to go. Because it's, once the quarantine's done, that's out of the animal control officer's hands. And Kathy would be able to direct him to the Department of Public Health, so.
So, should we ask Board of Health to respond to Mr. Egan?
Yeah, I think, since they got Frank's report today, maybe we just send them a note asking them if they're willing to.
Respond to Mr. Egan.
Yeah.
And then they could decide whether it's them or Kathy or whoever.
Right, right.
Kathy's probably the right one, but it's really their choice, I guess.
I would still like to have a recommendation from Frank, whether or not we should have a hearing.
If we.
Really, his recommendation would be whether he's deciding to declare the animal a nuisance. And of course, we're not gonna get anywhere because we don't even know which animal it is. And I, it's unfortunate and I, but I wonder if this isn't a dead end and we're not spinning our wheels.
Well, you know, I think in that respect, we are, but it just makes me uncomfortable because of, it was a pretty good bite. And the situation where, you know, there are children around where this, the bite took place. And it just, I hate just to let it go. I would, if, you know, something ever happened to a child, I just would be.
I think you would talk to the Board of Kathy Driney because I think they took this a step further because of the daycare center.
Okay.
That something was being reported.
Okay.
From their end, because of the bite.
Okay. Maybe then they need to let us know what action they have taken so that we're aware.
Yeah, that's, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, so you wanna ask them to let us know what action they've taken regarding the situation? Because we may not need to do anything if they've, if they're handling it.
I assume if the Egans have a problem with the Board of Health, then we'll be the next.
Right.
Place to go.
Okay.
Now, just grab some water.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll wait to hear back from Kathy Driney. And can you ask her just to send us an email, all three of us, to let us know what action they've taken? Thank you. Okay, so Rocky Harvest, after permit hours complaint. We have received several complaints about pumping being performed after the hours of the complaint. And we need to discuss if we're gonna be taking any type of action or what the next step would be.
Didn't we talk to KP?
We did.
And he gave us a sort of progressive set of actions along the way. And honestly, I forget what the first one was. Was it simply a letter from?
I think it was asking them, providing them with the information. And then, well, actually, the first step, I think, was for us to reach out to Ed Rose and ask him to stop. That these are the hours of the operation and that we've had two complaints of violations and to please comply with the hours. So, I can call Ed and do that. And then, you know, if it continues, then we.
We should probably do it in writing, too.
Okay. Well, that's what they suggested, was them sending a letter to.
Me and KP?
KP Law, to Ed Rose with the specifics of the violations.
I kinda like that, I mean.
I mean, we did already reach out, this isn't the first complaint.
Right, exactly.
The first complaint, we reached out and Ed sent us a response that said, "Call my cellphone if you ever have a problem." That, you know, they were, they wanted to work with us and I guess, I think, because Colleen, actually, I believe, spoke with him. And he said that it was an out-of-town driver. He got there earlier than he was supposed to. He was from New Hampshire, it was a mistake, wouldn't happen again. But then we got a complaint from Donna Hannah that there was someone pumping at 8:00 at night.
Yeah.
So, Colleen did already contact them and ask them to stop. And Ed sent us the letter saying he would with his cellphone. So, maybe at this point, you know, I can call him and let him know we've had a second complaint, but that we get KP to send them a letter with the specifics of the two complaints.
Yeah, I think we wanna build a paper trail so that at some point, I don't know how much leeway we have, but we ought to at least put the building blocks in place.
Okay. All right, so I'll reach out to Greg and provide him with the complaints that we've gotten and the letter from Ed Rose. I don't think I've got that electronically, Bree. I think you're gonna have to maybe scan that in and email it to me. The letter from Ed Rose, where he responded with his cellphone. Call him if there were ever any after-hours complaints. This was a while back.
I'm sorry, from who can Ed Rose?
Ed Rose.
I'll check too, I might have it.
And then.
It's in that file.
It's, yeah, I'm sure it's in the file. And then I'll ask Greg to draft a letter for us and have us all take a look at it before, before he sends it, okay. All right, Townhouse Communication Meeting with Department Heads. We touched on this earlier when we were talking about Rich Bowen. We've got our first meeting August 9th, I believe, was the date? And was it at 7?
7, I think.
7:00 PM?
It is August, Wednesday, August 9th.
August 9th, okay, 7:00 PM. So, you're gonna draft something for that so that we can get the word out? Okay.
I will.
All right, anything to add to that?
No.
Okay, all right. Correspondence?
Okay, kind of a pile of stuff here. So, EverSource writing to us, reminding us they are doing tree pruning and removal being done by Barnes Tree Service. This is a document which elects Christine as an alternate signer for Board of Selectmen warrants, mainly because I'll be away next week.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we sign this document.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
This is a flyer from Celebation of Hope. Anniversary of the Project Outreach in Plymouth that is an organization that deals with information and treatment of addiction. They're having an open house at the New Hope Chapel, July 25th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. A letter to me from KP Law congratulating me on my victory, being back as a selectman. Nice sentence in here.
Close contact.
Yeah, right. I beat blank. We will provide you with support and assist, or what was the? We will provide you with support and assist, or, what was the, nice sentence, that provide legal services, legal services must also be prompt, accurate, and cost-effective, and may it be so.
Here, here.
This is an announcement about a hazardous waste day, Saturday, August 12th, 9:00 AM to 12:00. I presume this is at the transfer station?
Yes, there'll be more info to follow, they just wanted to put it out there so people would know.
Okay.
August 12th.
...made of what they're going to accept and what they won't.
Carload is $50 for 25 pounds or gallons, half-carload $30, small car $20. They do list a couple things that we probably should not be accepting, car batteries, propane...
She's going to do a list, she said not to really go by that, just to let them know that this was going to come out, because on Sundays they allow some of these things.
Okay.
Okay.
Some days they don't, so they will be here.
All right. Hazardous, this will be the first one in quite a while in this town. Hazardous Waste Day, 9:00 to 12:00, Saturday, August 12th. All right. This is a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the co-executor of the, the grant estate, essentially asking us to waive property taxes based on the fact that the valuation went from $1,600 a year to $100,000 a year, and then documenting all those increases, and then quite a bit of documentation that goes with it. There's no evidence here that they ever filed for an abatement, apparently the owners have passed away, the estate is somewhat being held up by all of this, and I, we don't have the power to...
That's a...
To waive taxes?
Right.
No.
To waive taxes, so it seems to me this is an assessor issue that would have to go that direction.
Yeah.
They've gone, I brought that because I wondered why we got it. So I went to assessors and the tax, and gave them all a copy of it, and they had a little bit of a file.
Okay.
Going on there, and how the land was broken up, it's two separate pieces.
Take a look at...
They went on, so it was just, they thought maybe something could possibly happen with legal.
Okay.
Deb's here and knows about it, if you want me to...
So they know that it's in their ballpark.
They had a file, and it's, yes, so I gave them that, and she said there was no abatement filed, so that's...
So do we need to let them know that this is not an issue, that we have the authority?
It could, that I could say it's been transferred over to assessors.
We've referred it to tax collector and the assessors.
Okay.
The assessors have everything that's here?
Everything, and then...
Okay.
And I attached what she had, so it's in order.
Okay.
Perfect.
They already had it, if you can put this, and here's a copy of what they gave to me, if you want to look at that.
Okay.
Okay. Vendor warrant articles paid, US Bank for copiers $453, Comcast $105, Mass Municipal Association $520, Verizon $3.47, and Verizon $1.88.
Oh, boy.
I think writing the check probably cost more than nine...
It probably did.
So here are a few items that we have received communication or email on, I'm not sure whether we want to discuss them tonight or just add them to future agendas, that will be up to us to decide. So first of all, is something from Linda Letty, co-chair of the Open Space Committee. In dealing with the new open space plan, which is required by the state, they need to form a subcommittee that looks at ADA, anti, not defamation, anti-discrimination, or American Disabilities Act.
American Disabilities Act, yeah.
So they have to form a subcommittee, included in that subcommittee, apparently the state asks for someone that has a disability along the way, so she was really writing to us whether we had anyone to recommend. I'm not sure how specific we want to get...
Right, right.
...on TV, but I think maybe this is something for each of us to think about, and if we know people that might be a candidate for that subcommittee, to get back to Linda directly.
Okay.
That seems all right to everyone. All right, so there's that. We got an email from the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association about dues. Apparently, we had been paying them while Dale was here, seems to me we could wait until we have a town administrator to deal with that.
Yeah, I, at first, I thought that was the Mass...
MMA?
Municipal Association.
Which, so, I sent, no, but that's management, that we, we don't have a reason for that.
I did get a call today from WATD, the radio station, interested in what was on the agenda tonight, and looking for a selectman to comment, and I did. Apparently Dale had been doing this in the past. I did make clear to the fellow that I am not the chair, and that there are two other selectmen, and I'm glad to share your numbers if you want to speak to him. It was pretty serious. I joked with him at the end, all the questions were what the agenda items were, and I joked at the end thanking him for asking me questions that I couldn't answer, and he didn't laugh.
No sense in...
So it goes.
What was it about? The, was it the dogs or the...
No, he really just went down the list and said, "I see you're talking about town administrator."
Oh, this, I thought you meant the article.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay, gotcha, the agenda. Oh, okay.
And, you know, it sounded kind of boring, but that's, kind of, some of the work we do is a little boring. All right, so this one was an email to Bree, oh, it's about a cookout for the southeastern Massachusetts EMDA.
What does that mean?
I, I meant to look it up.
Southeast Mass, EMDA.
Could it be Emergency Management?
Yeah.
Directors?
Directory, something like that.
Association?
In any event, there is a cookout dinner later this week, July 20th, probably we're okay on that.
Busy, aren't they?
Yeah. So next to last thing, a town resident came in just before the meeting, Bruce Bradford, who lives on Route 58, right by the traffic lights, many-decade resident, a little unhappy about all the traffic and the way it is in 58, had an interesting idea that we put solar lights on the gazebo, particularly when it's rebuilt and redone, so that there's nighttime lighting, which might imply to people it's the center of town, and to slow down a little, and could be different light colors with different types a year, seemed like a pretty nice idea.
It's a neat idea.
I don't know if during the gazebo reconstruction that could be included, or, that seems like something to just keep, keep on our radar screen, because it would cost very little to go ahead and do it, we could even do it for private fundraising, so I'll keep that on my radar screen, and it would be, I think it'd be pretty, and it'd just add a nice piece, particularly when it's rebuilt.
Do we have any lights?
If you did the whole, because there's the monument, the black hole, the monument.
Yeah, absolutely.
Put the panels. Where would you put the panels?
You know, I think he meant just these compact solar lights that just on, that go into the ground.
That just would illuminate it.
Oh, okay.
Of course, then they'd be looking up, and then people that are concerned about light pollution wouldn't be so thrilled, and so, one way or another, it wouldn't please everyone, but maybe there's a constructive way to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to keep that one on mind, in mind.
Keep it on the radar?
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. Plumbton Halifax Express, there are barking dogs in Halifax. Plumbton is hiring a town administrator. The centerfold is actually really cool, it's two pages on the Denne Elementary School Summer Slime Camp with teacher Catherine Holmes. It looks like so much fun. I think we need to do this at one of our meetings, maybe, and then the last page is building EcoBots at the Plumbton Library, which also looks like a lot of fun, maybe a little less fun. That's more for the engineer types.
I think that's more, it's a little bit cleaner.
Yeah, it's cleaner, engineer-type mind, slime, you know, well, hard to say.
Who doesn't love slime?
Exactly. And with thankfulness, I report that completes correspondence.
Okay. All right. Dates to remember. All right, so we're meeting next Monday, the 24th, we're meeting tomorrow, which I'm taking that out of order. So tomorrow, we're meeting with Community Paradigm, Bernie Lynch, then we're meeting on 7/24, we're meeting on 7/31, and you're going to miss the 24th, right?
All right, next Monday.
But you're going to try to be back for the 31st?
I will, at worst, I'll be a few minutes late, I will be here.
Okay, well, then why don't we schedule some of the fire, two of the fire proposals for the 31st, and maybe one on the 7th? So after the 31st, then we meet with the Bylaw Review Committee at 7:30 PM, then 8:07, we're back here in this room, 8:09, looks like it is Townhouse Communications, boy, we're busy, we're busy in the summer, though, we were up to town meeting, and then 8:14, 8:21, and 8:28, so we've got a lot going on the, the next two months. Looks like we've got Public Safety Building Committee meeting, 7:19 this week at 6:00 PM, so if you're not able to go, you're gonna catch up.
As soon as the recording's up, I will be on it.
Perfect. Okay. Board's goals for coming year, financial management, anything new to report on financial management?
No.
No, we hadn't gotten the draft of the, the final, or the draft plan from the Collins Center, she, I think, was hoping to have it to us this week, so if I get it, I'll forward it to you guys for review. Public safety, we've got the building committee meeting on 7:19, we're working on hiring a consultant, so we're going to get that job advertised in the Halifax Reporter for the clerk, and also with public safety, we're going to start interviewing the consultants to take a look at our fire and EMS. Technology, we met with Steve Palo from Silver Lake to talk about getting some technology in here to, to better communicate presentations to our viewers at home. Anything else with technology?
Yeah, the exchange server is in-house. I've got a list of people who have mailbox email addresses, okay? I had Tara and Bree and Colleen go through, sort of check off, you know, do we know who these people are in some cases? And there's a few we don't, probably these are people who left. So what we'll do is, now we'll check with everybody here to make sure that, in fact, they're using, that they even know they have them before we update. Then the second stage will be, now we're going to have to go through all the department heads and the people who run boards and commissions, and decide how we handle those. Does just the board, the board commission, board chairperson get the email, or does everybody on that board want one? Once we update those, we want everybody to be using them, because now our open meeting laws will require that, in fact, we have this all documented, so people like myself and Mr. Russo will have to start paying attention, so. This is the first step. Second step, I'll draft up a memo and pass it by you and see, but...
Terrific.
We're moving forward on this.
Excellent. Good.
Any thoughts, Mike?
No.
Okay.
Look forward to, I look forward to that coming to fruition.
Is there a cost per email on this one?
No, well, there is a cost for the license overall that we've already paid, so it's not going to be, it allows us to have up to, I forget how many...
A certain number of licenses.
So much more than we have people.
Okay, because I know one time Dale was checking with the...
Yeah, no, that was...
Didn't go.
Yeah, that's all gone away.
He didn't want to check his email.
In fact, that's why we took this approach.
Okay.
So we can get everybody up to date.
Grants, I don't think we've had any movement on that. I did send an email to Mina Heidi, Gregory Mina, who was Colleen's contact. I haven't had a chance to, to read her email response, but why don't I forward it to both of you guys, and then we can talk about it next week?
Yes.
All right, you got it.
Can I get that?
You sure can, I'll send it to all three of you. All right, and then volunteerism, anything new on that front?
No.
Just continuing to work on it, okay. All right, sent, all three of you, okay. All right, so minutes, we've got 6:26 and 7:10 that were done by Bree, and then we've got 7:10, 7:11, and 7:12 that were done by Mark. So you want to start with 6:26?
I think it was the one that was running.
Yeah, I read these quite a while ago.
And I did, too, and I had no, no problems.
I've got some, you know, just cleaning up a little bit, the...
Okay.
So I'm, I'll just give them a...
Okay.
There's nothing that really changes the...
All right, so I make a motion, these minutes be approved with a little bit of cleanup.
As a matter of fact.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's 6:26, now we go to 7:10.
These are the 7:10...
I'm sorry, who made that motion, Mark?
Mark made the motion, and John seconded. So this was 7:10, last week's meeting.
Oh, yeah. I had one typo down near the bottom, paradigm...
Oh, it's an M, yeah, D-I-G-M.
And otherwise, I was fine.
Okay. I just had substitute B instead of Colleen. I know it's probably wishful thinking on your part, sorry.
No, no, no.
You get what you get.
Is that for the executive session? I did a cut and paste.
Yeah, I know.
And I just stuck it up there, and I...
Yeah, that's funny.
I stared afterwards, and I said...
Good try.
That's not even here.
All right, yeah, that's all I had. Anybody else have?
No.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of July 10th as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we go on to Mark's executive session. I read all of those, I thought they were all terrific.
Yeah.
So you want to start with 7:10?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I was good with it.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 7:10 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 7:11. I thought that was good, too. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes of 7:11 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 7:12, anything?
7:12, no, I guess.
That was with Bowen.
That was Rich last year.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept the execu, actually, these aren't executive session, these are open session.
No, those were open session.
Okay. The meeting minutes from 7:12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are current.
We have, or did we do 6:26?
Yeah, we did 6:26.
Okay, oh, that was the beginning.
That was the beginning.
Okay.
Okay. All right, selectmen's rants and raves. All right, John, you want to start?
Yeah, this is, I guess, a rave for entertainment. If anybody's interested in seeing really good theater, they should be paying attention to the Priscilla Beach Theater, which is putting on just fabulous shows for not much money, and if you're interested in theater, I would encourage you to look into this. Great shows.
Excellent. All right, my rave is the Plumbton Public Library and all of the programs that they offer. Being part of the SAIL network, you can get books from, you know, basically any book you want, if they don't have it, they can get it for you. They offer passes to museums, to the Foxborough, Patriots Hall of Fame, you know, Museum of Science, Aquarium, all the old Ironsides down in New Bedford, all over. So if you're looking for things to do with your family, and a great way to save some money on, you know, with the, the cost of admission, go to the library and sign out passes. If, if we don't have it, you can get them from any of the libraries in the SAIL network, you can go there and you can register... You can go there and you can register for these online. You just have to pick up the, the passes, some of them. You have to return the following day, some you do not, but Plymouth Plantation, I mean, the, the list goes on and on. So if you're looking for some ways to get out with your kids and, and do some fun things or just you want to get out and experience some things this summer, go to your local library.
So I don't think I've ever had a rant and so just a sort of a, a little tiny bit of a rant is I noticed during the summer how many towns are going to every other week Board of Selectmen meeting. I think I heard Carver might be going to once a month.
Wow.
Maybe that's made up. I, I kind of salute us that we have no problem doing two or three or four meetings a week, but I think I, I, I do have the sense that we are on the edge of having so much on our plate and hope that we will continue to be kind of careful to move expeditiously, though wisely in getting some things off our plate and being careful not to put anything more on our plate, anything more than we need to. So that was sort of a nuanced rant. The rave actually is for the fellow down at the end of the table. We had a public official who had a difficult situation to deal with in the last couple weeks and the board was able to help out, but John went out of his way, I think, twice in the last week to really help out this person that was having a very challenging time. I think some of it was just to make government run well, some of it was probably to just get the thing resolved and out of all of our hair, but I thought I saw in all that some compassion for a fellow that was having a hard time, so I salute Mr. Trainer on that one.
Yeah, that's, that's great. It's, yeah, absolutely true. Thank you so much for handling that and getting things done much more expeditiously than they might have otherwise, so, yes. All right, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, so we are meeting again next week. Mark will not be here, so we're not going to meet with any of the consultants, but we're sure we'll have.
Tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah, we're meeting tomorrow night with, with Bernie and then, so who knows what we'll be talking about next week, but I'm sure it'll be entertaining. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.